Hey everybody! This is a video tutorial about animating an existing book cover. Uh, explain a little bit about it. This is what it ended up looking like. It's not maybe 100%, but this is just seen as like a personal exercise or a skill builder exploratory type project. It gets a little long in the tooth, but it is step by step. Maybe I'll make a more condensed one, but if you really want to see the nitty gritty, watch someone work in real time, solve problems in real time. That's what I kind of like to see. Uh, or just a little companion art friend animating along with you. Uh, take the time to watch. Feel free to drop any comments, ask any questions and I hope you have a good day. Thanks! Hey! A friend asked me to go into his After Effects class and show his students my work and to talk about some stuff. So what I wanted to do was make a quick little video where I would like do the same assignment as them and then uh, show them how I did it. Just showing them a couple more basic tools which are, I would say invaluable that people sometimes don't think of and that's like namely getting out of After Effects and using Illustrator to start your work. So we're gonna make, or the assignment is to uh, take old book covers and to animate them. Just make like a short little one to five, five to 10, like however many second long loop and then just see what the students come up with. Like the groundwork is done, the design is done, the art and the styling, the colors, like everything is chosen and it's just like coming up with things that are good exercises really. So I, I think it's a great assignment and I wanted to do it to show them. They're like, "Yeah, I put time in this and I can tell them how many hours." I'll track my hours and my time and we'll just see what happens. Cause I think it'll be cool. So this is the one that I chose. I, I think it's just gonna be a very simple thing where what I want to do is play with the lighting and the shading on this face where he will be looking forward pretty much like this. So all we really need to do is transform one of these faces that are looking this way to looking that way. And since it's just a solid fill, all you really need to do is like move the shapes to the other side. So that, that's my uh, supposition, like my guess, my hypothesis and we're gonna see if it actually works. Uh, I'm not gonna screw around with fonts too much. I'm just gonna go with something that works quickly and get it in there and then that can always be changed later on, or we can end up just superimposing on the original image. Uh, the original image is not the best, but I'm not gonna take the time to clean it up anymore. Uh, it's high res enough, I would say, but I wanna just keep this flat and then we'll put grain on the end. We're just gonna jump in and see what happens. To start, I'm going to lay in my image. Okay, so I just dropped it into a 1920 by 1080 document, cause that's what I'm used to working with video. Uh, and I'm just gonna resize everything to that sort of and then resize the artboard after the fact, if that makes sense. Uh, what I wanna do is maximize the pixels of this image without having to render any extra ones really. I'll say 1200 and then we'll bring in the width. I'm just using my mouse wheel and the shift button to go 10 increments, otherwise you do ones. 900 by 1200 sounds good to me. I ju- I wanna do like whole numbers just cause that's the way I am. Alright! So Illustrator, simple, it's easy. It's like Photoshop, but more architecturally inclined, I would say. I'm going to artboard center, center and this picture is just centered. I'm gonna Ctrl+2 lock it. If you open up the layer, you'll see it's locked, but really we're just gonna call this whole thing BG or reference, reference art. Alright, and I'm gonna lock that layer altogether. This is where we're gonna do our work. So, uh, the Mercy Men. Illustrator is easy. Um, I use this program to find similar fonts quickly. I'm on Windows, so it's different and everything is, I don't know, people would say crappier, but it works just fine for me. Where it scans your fonts, you can type in a word. You can type in the spacing kind of. Th- this is all lowercase, the Mercy Men. And then I kinda just go through. And if you have an assload of fonts, it'll take forever, but I'm gonna just end up using Anton Regular. It's close, it's not exact. These are more square-ish, but it's good enough. It'll get us mostly there. And anything else is kind of just icing. So what I'm doing, line up the baseline of this word and I'm just gonna try and get it as tall, but also obey my rules when I was making my artboard sort of, just make it like even fonts. So 210 seems pretty good to me. Going to just get something that looks okay. Changed my tracking to optical. That will automatically help quite a bit. And we're gonna do a palette sort of, just making a square and making a few other ones. Do a palette, but we're not gonna stick to it because this is like a photograph. It's gnarly. It's an old book cover, so nothing is gonna be pure and correct. And we want things to be flexible as well. So this will be the BG color. Okay, so this like you could call your palette. If you wanted, you don't have to. Or you could color pick just from here, but I, I recommend picking from a, a solid source and then you can make a swatch and globalize it or whatever. Uh, this looks okay for now. And like I said, you can kind of just getting going and then fixing it later is good. So Anton, trying to see, here we go. This might be what I'm looking for. This is very thin. And I'm gonna go ahead and I like to dupe stuff off before I screw with it too much. You can hear my dog in the background, he's moving around. Good boy Charlie. I'm gonna create outlines. Now I didn't get all like super meticulous about the tracking or anything and individually kerning stuff, just cause I don't, not that I don't care, I just don't think it's gonna make or break this project. So I'm gonna skip it. But one thing that's important since the font is different is the space between the Y and the N here. I'm gonna group the individual words. So when I come into this higher group, it's not as big of a pain in the butt. The Mercy Men, okay, that looks good. Now what I'm gonna do is approximate a cover cover. I'm gonna call this just Book BG for now and we'll put it under our words. So at any time, we can kind of like quickly see just our redo. Alright, so now we're going to come back to our work. Alan E. Norse. Okay, and that will keep all the settings with the little squishing that we did, which is, is good. We're just gonna try to get it somewhere. And you can see that it kind of snapped somewhere. It's snapping the top of the box, which is not the top of the letters to the middle of this E, which is okay, I guess, I don't know, but really we probably want this whole thing to be at the baseline of the Just shrink that over and maybe let's try this at 100. If we had the real font, I'm sure this would line up a lot better, but I'm gonna call this good. Line at the bottom of the baseline of that word, but then also the right side of this M, I'll say. And so these little spacing things are valuable, like temporary spacing things. What you could do with them, if you wanted, is like go through and get the height of this area. And then you could go and like duplicate it and you could match stuff perfectly, but this has some different ascenders and descenders, which is just fine. Like the C goes under, so we would match the R and we'll see that the, this whole N can come up maybe. But again, that can kind of change things. I'm gonna leave it how I had it. Just keep it speedy, but those are good to know. Okay, and turn off the background and we can resource this color. V is, uh, this is never gonna get printed, so I'm not working in CMYK. There's no, no need. But I guess what you could do is go to hue, saturation, brightness and just clean up some of these colors a little bit. Make it so it's like, yes, this was never an old book. It's always been new. That's dangerous. Before you do that, you wanna duplicate it. So this whole row, you could duplicate and these can be our bigger, bolder, stronger colors. I'm just gonna put it up to 100% for now. This one, bigger, bolder, stronger. The Mercy Men, alright. It's easier to take color out, but it's kind of hard to add it back if it's black and white, if that makes sense? So I'd rather have it be too strong. Okay, so I'm happy with that and that's good. And this we'll just call the text layer. And you can lock it if you want, you don't have to, it doesn't matter. Alright, so now I'm gonna focus on just one of these figures. We'll just start foreground to background probably. And you can get practice with your pen tool here. So what I would do is work on the entire shape first. I'm gonna make a hard corner. I'm gonna go beyond the shape of the image. If this happens, it's a problem, you can just do Shift X and it'll clean it up, like it'll swap the foreground to background color and you can keep modifying your stuff. And basic pen tool stuff, if you don't know it, look up a tutorial. It will save you years and years of time. I am a rougher in. I like to rough it in and then go back and clean it up. And I have my own ways of doing things. One is to, when a handle gets broken like that, I break it again by making it a corner and then I just tell it to be Bezier and it kind of does a better job of guessing. And this doesn't have to be exact, it doesn't have to be perfect, it's fine. Uh, this technology didn't exist back then, you can do live corners, which is good. I don't know if they will stay live, cause it's not a square. And again, not like 100%ing this. We can either add noise to it or we can fiddle with it after the fact. So we are just looking at shapes here. Okay, that's good for that one. And now we're gonna make an overlapping shape and we're gonna mask it out after the fact. So I make it bigger again. That's an edge that we'll clean up. That's an edgeable round. Sometimes it's just easier to just quickly lay in the verts. Vertices. Close it. So you can kind of see the little shape there. This one, just hold down Alt button. Get this here. And I am okay with most of this so far. Just make that rounded. Okay, with that, and then we're gonna just make a new shape for the nose. Okay. The nose and this head shape are gonna be of this color. We're gonna have this be this color for now. Alright, and we're gonna copy this. Ctrl+Shift+V, paste it in place. Command+7, mask it out. Put it down one layer and we have the nose. Okay, that's good, that's really good. So what we're gonna do is come grab the nose, grab this fill and grab this head. So that's everything. And we're gonna group it. And I'm gonna hold Alt, copy it up to here. Go into transparency, mouse wheel, lower it a little bit. And turn, Shift R is your warp tool. Turn off detail and simplify. I have another little tutorial about it. If you want it, you can do it, but you will start adding in tons and tons of vertices. Like this added in more here. I don't wanna do that. I put verts where I wanted them and I want them to stay that way. So if you just double click on it and you turn off detail, detail adds, simplify removes. So I just leave it as it is and y'all keep the same number of vertices. Alright, now you wanna get this. You okay bud? Did you hurt yourself at daycare? You did. You hurt yourself at daycare, boy. Oh, nuts. Come here bud. This is Charlie, just started limping. Sometimes he just wants attention. Okay, dog's okay, I think. Not gonna worry about it. Uh, sometimes you'll work yourself into a corner and you're like, "Oh, I can't really see what I'm supposed to do." That's fine, just select something, hide it. Reduce your stuff, like get it down to the bare essentials of what you're working on. And cut, cut, cut the crap out, I guess. Use the Shift X thing to swap the swatches, you can see better. If something's not visible, then that's okay. Just get in, select it. You can just use your direct select probably and like change the color. Drill down. If you name your layers, that will help too. Yes, it will. So if you called this nose. We just want the head shape to not be the same color as the background, so we can see it. There we go. The uglier, the easier. Right Charlie? That is right. Okay. Alright, I don't know what this extra shape in here is. I am just going to turn off the shadow. Okay, it was a clipping mask for the shadow and that's just fine. Uh, here, what I would do is just extend this all the way down. And this is in no man's land, no one will see it. But it's easier to have it fill up a big vacant space than for it to be blank and trying to match this like vague thing over here. Cause what if you wanted to have him come up first? Then you'd have to like make more artwork after the fact and it might undo your animation. Alright, this shape is close, just Shift W. Shift W'd in, hold Alt to shrink this. It's hard to see because that gray default is right there. This, this kind of has like a Saul Bass uh, paper cutout thing, like a Matisse cutout going on. Blue is always a bad color to choose, cause sometimes or just whatever layer color your thing is. Just do something different. That's hard to see though, it's too much like that. Oh, here we go, here we go. Alright, there we go. One thing I like to imagine is what these original artists would do if they had the computers of today. That would be pretty dope, delicious to see what they would do. They'd be like, "What? You can just, oh my God, I didn't have to use Frisket or my Airbrush. I could just use whatever." But they'd probably become just as complacent as we are now. Okay, it doesn't have to be perfect. I'm getting too caught up in the details. Uh, here you can see this kind of straight edge of the, the head cutout silhouette and then this overlay, it's like a printing process, is my guess what happened where they printed the purple and then they printed the purple, the bright purple and they printed the blue and then they did the little scribbling etching effect. And it didn't always line up perfect and it doesn't have to. I think it still looks cool and we're gonna try to recreate that in After Effects, but we're not gonna be bound by it. Right here, so you have a half straight, half corner or half Bezier, half corner. I'm just gonna turn it full Bezier and it will make it nice and straight. Here, instead of the hard corner, we've got a nice little neck shape. Now, one thing I don't like about the live corners is that it sometimes doesn't do a better job, but definitely I dislike that it adds two verts. Like I think it could still do all of this with one and just have like one hanging vert and then you could affect the Bezier of this one floating vertex. So it'd be like a mix between what I just did there and what the live corner did. But in this case, I like the live corner more. Here, we have the same jacked up little thing going on. So just turn it to smooth. Call that good. Move these around. And I kind of feel like it's not supposed to be this far to the right. It's supposed to be more like this. And that the scribbling process was a little too strong. We, we like our hard edges, we're gonna keep that. Okay, so that's the base shape of this man. I'm saying man because he's a Mercy Man, I assume. Not a Woo Man, I don't know, it doesn't matter either way. Uh, okay, and then since this, making this shadow shape is so easy, we're just gonna redo that. I turned it off, but I think it'd be easier just to recreate it. And I'm gonna go outside of it. I'm gonna show you something in After Effects, it's very useful. Okay, so this is this color. We're gonna bring back our other guy. It's like this. This, we're gonna make this. Copy this, Ctrl+Shift+V. Grab the shadow, Ctrl+7 and get that. It did the inverse of what I wanted. Sometimes that happens. I don't know why it's being a pain in the ass. Shadow, face. Oh, because it's group, that's why. Dang, so I, yeah, I think I duplicated the wrong thing. Wow, this is really messed up. Ungroup it all. Get rid of it. Okay. There, finally. And you do, yes, just start naming this stuff. It saves you tons of time later on. Okay, well, I don't like how, select the circles. That's what's going on. Batman. Left man. Okay. I'm getting this ominous tone going on, which is good, I think. It's what the book was going for. Okay. This is just basic pen, pen stuff. No sense in explaining it, cause I'd probably just be explaining to people, they would be like, "I know exactly what you're doing, I know what that is, it's nothing special." Whatever. Hey, uh, stop being a shitty thing, eh? Alright. Okay, now we're gonna work on the foreground guy. He's a, maybe the Merciest of them all. And this is where we will have some different techniques shown. So uh, we are going to separate out the head. So it's not that like one unified shape. We're gonna leave the neck on the shoulders. So we'll do kind of what we did and just lop off the head detail. So uh, these all need to be on their own individual layers. You'll see why in just a little bit. Okay, so I'm kinda gonna leave it like this. Call that good. It doesn't matter what you fill this in, it really doesn't matter. It doesn't matter what you fill this in, it really doesn't matter. But we do need to take care of the shadow. So that's good for his body, we're gonna move on to his head. Now the head, if you think about it. Well, don't even think about it. I'll just say, the interesting part will come in trying to get his chin to come over here. It doesn't need to hide too much, but this like egg shaped to go from here to here. So, we're gonna try to think about this in what's gonna happen, what we're gonna do is animate the vertices, so we're gonna have this one here. And it's gonna come pretty much over to here. And that should work. Should. And you wanna just have kind of as few vertexes as possible, because each one is gonna have to be animated individually. And the more you have, the more lumpiness it's gonna be at the end, and we want to avoid lumpy. So, what I think I'm gonna do is. Add one vertex and. Kinda like cham for this. Okay, that's good. Now, is one side of his head always gonna be in shadow? No, it's probably going to change over time, so we can just call this. Base. That, and that's good. Alright, now what we're gonna do is kinda chop up the face into different parts, so we're gonna have his nose. MM nose RS, mercy man nose, right side of his nose. So, these guys have the side of nose on their left side, so this guy's gonna end up with three parts of the nose most likely. For simplicity sake, even though it's more complicated, but, uh, that's how I'm going to do it, so I'm gonna drag and drop this. And this is gonna be called middle. Didn't need to have like a toggle for making verts eight times as big temporarily or something. Okay, so this on our guy is white. Okay. Mouth, that's gonna be easy. Give it its own layer, you'll see why later. Well, we're gonna derive shapes in After Effects from these objects in Illustrator, and it works better. Doing it by layers. Mouth. Got nose, and now if you think about it, his nose is going to flip over the other way. But what I think we can do is use this light bridge of the nose to become the lit side. Right here, and just to form the shape, so we'll call that good for now. And now what we're gonna do is the eyes. Use this, this. Uh, it looks kinda like a little raccoon mask to me, so that's what I'm just gonna copy. I might do it this way. Like that. So if we start turning all of these pieces on, we will be building up our head. And it's all looking pretty good. You just need to do the shadow here. So for the shadow, what I'm going to do is focus on the shape of it. Shape of it by being the shape of the shadow. And now there's. Something that will happen when we make this pseudo 3D by animating it, in my opinion, that they just didn't have to worry about here. I'm gonna make just one extra space, because we made like a mask, and we need to cover up this. Uh, shadow cast by the brow, I'm assuming is kinda what's going on. Maybe, who knows? Start just turning some of these into corners, cuz it's gonna be a lot easier to animate corner points than the other ones. Okay, but this we're gonna leave in this really funky shape, and you will see why. So imagine that this is clipped by the head. Head shadow, alright, good, good, good. Um, want to check on. Okay, so. On our body layer. Well, we need something for the neck to go into, sort of. Just gonna leave this for now. And I think this shape is what we need to make bigger. So we'll add one more vertices to this shadow. Make sure it's big enough down here. It's easier to make it too big and pull it back. Okay, so he's, all he's going to do is look from one direction to the other, and we're just gonna animate the shading of his face. We're gonna get all this stuff labeled right, and then head shadow. So for the eyes, I don't like how. I have mixed like hard and soft edges, I'm just gonna make them all hard. Hard and soft corners, sorry. Put in one more, do the bridge, that should be what we need, maybe. We might have to break the pattern of what's. Existing to do something new that's gonna work better. Okay, so from here, we've got a pretty good grasp of what we're gonna use in the next part. And that's gonna start just a minute, here, and that's gonna start really soon. Save. Save it by default, should work just fine. Um, it doesn't matter if you have your layers turned on and off, but I think what I wanna do is start. Changing these, adding in separate layers, so. Alright, so each of these layers individually are gonna come in, and we'll save. And we're gonna load up After Effects, alrighty, in After Effects. So all we're gonna do, import file, this is an empty After Effects thing. Empty After Effects document, open this, I want to open, and this is what I do. You don't have to do it this way, I have my own way of doing it, and it seems like whenever I work with other people, they'll do it totally differently, which is. Doesn't make sense to me, this makes sense to me. Import it as a composition and retain layer sizes. It's gonna go through and read our Illustrator file, it's going to drop each one of our layers. Into its own After Effects layer, which is wonderful, that's exactly what we need. And then we can see this stuff, we can start moving things around, uh, maybe we want left man in front. There we go, that looks like the other one did. And we've got things you will see, like the, oh, the text layer, instead of just saying things. You'll see that the text comes in even though the layer was disabled, which is wonderful, we've got our background, even though the layer was. Not visible or whatever, so this is, this is a good start. But everything is really, really simple, except for this mercy man, so that's kind of what we're gonna focus on. Without trying to go crazy, so, what we're gonna do is, uh, we can move. Hello? Okay, so you could start moving these layers around, you'll see like we're moving his head shadow and breaking the illusion of what's here. But, uh, or like his, his eyes, you can move those, you could maybe. Link the nose, the mouth, the eyes, the nose middle, like all these together. And move them, but that's not quite gonna solve our problem, so. What we're gonna do is. We're gonna make the background a different color, just with a basic fill. Let's make it darker. Now, this is just so we can start to see the difference between the silhouettes. We didn't do the little scribbly stuff, we can do that later on, much easier, this is the hard part. Uh, I'm gonna right click, do new null. It goes to the center of the document, which is fine, but what I wanna do is kind of map out where his face is gonna be. What would have been smart is to do this and then draw one image of what his face is gonna look like in the neutral pose. But we're kinda just gonna duplicate one of these. Um, so here. Alt Shift P, laser keyframe right there, and he's just going to look over here. Over the duration of thirty frames, which is one second for me, cuz I prefer thirty frames per second. Okay, and that's about all. And now his head is gonna maybe like rotate down a little bit, but we're not gonna worry about that, and now this is just gonna be like. The neutral. Position, just, just to start having something to work toward. Okay, so you could come in here, lay a keyframe here, come over here, and you move this into shadow. You could, uh, turn this off, you could link all of these things, that's what I was trying to do. Link all these things, and when he looks over here, his head moves over there. Uh, where you can do left head shadow, make it a none. First, let's do this. MM head base, duplicate this, so now we have two of them, copy it up here, and we'll just put this as an alpha matte. There you go, we get an automatic chop out of that thing. Okay, we can link this back up to our null here. See that he's kind of really rough, really rough, we gotta start rough. And go big, or go home, or something, who knows, who knows? Uh, so this is one idea, these are kind of like the limits of using these sprite pieces. Uh, you could, you could move them individually, once you get in here, by just like a little bit or something. And have it feel like it's moving a different amount. Oh, not laying keyframes is a problem. We want the eyes to go in the middle, but we need to change their shape, no matter what, that's really what needs to happen. So we're gonna start with the eyes. I start simplifying this head. Starting with the eyes is good, turn off all keyframes, we just want it to be bare, and you right click on eyes. And you turn it into a, buh 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 buh, create shapes from vector layer. Good, good, so what that does, it duplicates your layer and makes shape layer. An After Effects version of a shape layer. Which is what we want, so here, we're gonna start laying keyframes inside of our path. Okay, so, we'll see why I added in extra vertices and stuff soon. So this is still, it copies properties, like it copied the linking to the null that we did for the face roughness. We don't want that anymore, so what we're gonna do is just use this shadow moving kind of as like. That's our helper guide as well right now. But we're going to move these verts. Into a position where these kind of eyes are. Just gonna select them one by one. Uh, I'll probably move them all at first. So just now, we even have a little bit of motion, and then I'm going to deform them. You can see how far, how much space, this is like one fifth of the head width on these, this, this first one. So this can go over quite a bit, the bridge of the nose is like in the middle or maybe three. Two, uh, maybe three quarters of the way across the face, which is good. And that's, we can use this as kind of a helper. Lot of little helpers. Going on here, aren't there? There we go, and his head shape is going to be a little bit different than the other people's. Oops, and you'll, you see what happened there, I just drug the keyframe, the marker over. So really if you just use K, J and K to go from next frame to the other, you can stay on your keyframes. That is a much better way to do it. Okay, so that's good for now. But what we need to do also is get this chin moving, this like locked-off chin. So, we're gonna come down to the head base, we're gonna make this a shape from layer. Okay, and it always puts it on the very top. That's just fine. We just have to move it down. A path. And this might have been a safer place to start with all these changes, but maybe it'll just make you respect it more. And we will try to make an ear from this. This point could slide all the way up his head, really. At least to be his jaw. It doesn't look like he's turning his head far enough, does it? So we're gonna move some more of this stuff. That, and this is why I pulled the neck up so high earlier, but it's okay for now. Okay. After Effects always interprets these converted shapes and default shapes as a blue layer, which can be hard to see, like it's really hard for me to see right now. So what you can do is temporarily change that. Green, no, that's even worse. Uh, it's, I don't know. They get quickly hard to see, we'll just try to leave it on blue for now. Okay, so we've got that going on, and when this movement happens, the back of the head needs to pull in. So this little vert right here is kinda gonna go up to the top in the middle, where like all these other ones are. And maybe straighten out. We're gonna pull this one in as well, and we're gonna pull this one in. And so there's some imagination using that needs to happen. But by just manipulating a few things, and this is why you want as few of the point possible, because you're having to move every single one of them. You start to build the sensation of an object moving in 3D space, sort of. Okay, so this is good. All right, I, I think this is a good start for now. You can see if we turn this off. We've got the, that head shape still moving in the background. Which is referencing our original sprite, which is okay, but we don't really wanna do that. And by saying all that convoluted bullshit, and you're like, what is he talking about, so this layer that we did a matte to, to just get it done. We're gonna no matte. We're gonna delete the head base, the head base is what was static. But now we want to reference this new shape for our shadow. Okay, so we're gonna duplicate this head shape. Put it above this shadow layer, and use it as a matte. There we go. So it's, it's going, it's doing something. But say we want to change how this head rotation happens. Like maybe we need to bring the corner this corner down, to get more chin in there. That's gonna be really hard to constantly duplicate this and move it up there. So what we're gonna do, go to frame one. Open up this, and you'll see that, or you can press U if you wanted to. U is like uber, ultra, whatever, just opens up what's animated. And you'll see that this has keyframes, so this is just the same thing, I'm gonna turn it off, and I'm gonna alt-click it. And it's just gotta reference that bottom. The original head, so no matter what the head does, this shadow matte is gonna also do. Cool. Okay, and we can go one more by let's not have this connected to the null anymore, and have it do this. So this is rotating, this is where the shadow starts, and this is where the head ends, the shadow's not animated, which is fine, but we're gonna convert this to a shape. Now we need to relink it up. Okay? And I'm gonna move any of our original artwork down below this null, that can be kind of our break between imported layers and shape-created controlled layers, animated. Uh, so now, what we can do is modify these shadow points. So we want, this is like our, our home safe frame, as long as we keep stuff here, it'll be somewhat in alignment to what we created over here. So we're gonna lay down a frame there, and then from here, I'm gonna guess that we just kind of move it over like this. And this is just a guess, you, no matter what, you can always go back to this first keyframe that we laid. This is where we modify these points to match more boldly this. So some of these end up just like we might end up doing something like this. Okay, and what's wrong here is that I don't have this head turning enough, and it's not obeying this convention of like foreground to background, like this cheek is behind the brow. So if we make this more like this, it'll start to work better. Ooh, that's rough, there's an extra one in there. Okay? That's okay for now. Oops. I went way past it. Okay, and so we've got this little garbage right here, what we wanna do is come and find our all of those little weird nose pieces that I was talking about. Let's do the nose middle. Let's turn it on, and move it on top just temporarily. You can see that this is this piece. So it's gonna break this, uh, that's a bad example. Let's do nose right side. Turn this on, okay, we got our, our darkness in this shape is closed up again. So we're gonna right-click, convert it to a solid shape, and I'm gonna move this below our null blocker, it doesn't, doesn't do anything, it's just there for order and reference, sort of. Reference as to where like the bridge of the nose between the eyes would kind of be, so you can see I need to move the eyes to the right much, much more, but we're not gonna worry about that quite yet. We're gonna focus on this little bridge of the nose thing, this is still linked to the null. We're gonna come here, contents group, path, there we go, one, there we go, or move this, and this moves into complete shadow, which is good. Call that good for now. Maybe we will fix those eyes to get in the right place. Eyes, and this is why you wanna have your stuff layered, uh, there's a lot of empty space here that's not used. Press U again on selected layers, it will condense that, just show what you're wanting to animate, or what you have animated. Which you obviously wanna an- animate, because you have animated it. Alright, so we need to get this much further to the right. This here. Control Shift H. Alright. It's okay, we're losing some definition once this nose is gone, like you can't really tell what's going on. And I think it's because the cheek. The shape. Control Shift H brings your helper stuff back. And you can, you can bring back some curves if you want to. You'll see what happens, is that the Bezier's pull-in to make a hard corner where it started. Okay, you can change your viewing mode so it ping-pongs back. Okay, I think getting this light color of the nose on top is gonna be very, very helpful, so that's this. We're gonna create shape from layer. Keep losing it, sorry. Come down here, group, path, make one keyframe, press U just to get rid of all the other shit. Turn off link to null, and we're just gonna get this moved to about the spot we want it. So there's some frames that are kind of giving away our swap, which isn't nice. But it's really not that bad. Just wanna clean up this artwork. A little bit more. I think I want it to be over more. So what's happening is that it is, uh, it's going from the bridge of the nose to representing the side of the nose, and it's not doing it what's the word, as strongly as I was hoping it would. Just add a little bit of time. Let's get this shadow a little less aggressive. And so what I don't like is this frame about here. Where you can see it cut in both ways. I think I'll fix that on the eye layer. Sort of saying that this is not right. There you go. And it's still doing a weird thing where it's going from side to the front of the nose, this bridge part. Uh, breaking the illusion, is what I'm saying, like these noses are drawn as if they probably cone, so they don't have a flat bridge. And I should have made the art that way, but I made it so it was like two sides and a third flat front side. Would we, maybe lessen if it's a lot of it's plain, and a lot of it is stuff that other people will not care about. Okay, that's a little better. Okay, so this, I'm gonna say is the shadow layer's fault. Because this, oops. This can go way, way over like this, I bet. I don't like how on the shadow it feels like one of these, this point should be over here. So I'm gonna try to do some of these Bezier art things that should have been done in Illustrator here, and see if I can get them to interpolate in this acceptable way. Okay, we've got this, and what I want to do is not have it start and stop at such full Okay, F9 is pause recording on the screen thing that takes over that. Let's make this. Let's make this softer, so there's an ease going on. Okay, that's pretty good, I'd say that's pretty, pretty good for now. Let's work on his body. Let's try it. Create shapes from vector layer, put everything on top, which is good. Now you'll see, this was made from the body shape, and then the shadow shape, and it was clipped inside of itself, so instead of having one group, we have two. So we're gonna try to see what this does without it getting too messy. Get these frames back there. And his body's kind of tilted up that way, so when he comes down his arm's gonna be more this way. And some of this stuff, once you move it just a little bit, it might, it might fake what you're going for enough. Just need to move this below everything. Okay, so may- maybe this is a good place to show the difference between the linear and the eased keyframes. Like this kind of just starts moving and this kind of slowly begins. Just easy easing those will help. Alright, so that's, that's good, but there's no shape change in too many areas. Think I'm gonna get the left man on top. This little incut is kind of like a rim shadow, I think, of this left guy. So I don't know the best way to deal with that, but it brings attention to this person who's gonna be looking up. Looking up, not sure what's going on, okay. Sometimes you have to select the keyframes to actually get into modifying the object. Clean up that overlap that was going on, or underlap, whatever you wanna call it. Oops, you can see, it was not on my keyframe. I think we're gonna have to move this shoulder a little bit on both of these. Okay, so this is looking pretty good, I want to fix the right side outlines. I'm kind of converting this to be that, just two plain nose I was talking about. Which just means that you need to get, oops. Line up these things a little bit more. And they should line up a little bit better here. I might pull this one down. So it starts to look like the nose goes down a little bit. That might be too far. Okay, there's still a little schmutz there, but I'm not gonna worry about that. Okay, there's some crap going on over here where this is peeking out. The under flesh part, but I'm also not gonna worry about it. Because once you have it on the background, that's the same color, it will blend right in. Okay, let's talk about maybe how we can fix this little feathering problem that's happening. Uh, After Effects doesn't interpolate vectors very well, it doesn't alias them perfectly. Or at least the same that Illustrator does, it puts them in different places. And that's why you end up with this little haloing going on. So I'm gonna go and find what's causing it, my guess is it was the base outlines, and I was right. And what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna add a offset path. Now you can see what that did. What it does, it's a lot like the Illustrator where it actually jumps out. It renders bigger than what it's supposed to show, so I'm gonna make this negative point five. So, get of, get rid of these things. It was here, negative twenty-five is here, you can still see a little bit, so I'm gonna just crank it back. You, you can see the jawline, like what it's doing. And if we make our background different color, you'll definitely be able to see what it's doing. You can see what it's growing and shrinking this. I just want it to disappear. And it won't throw off very many things. We might have to do that on this white, on the shoulder as well, but. So from here, it looks like back man showing through, but this his neck is just too short. So I'm gonna try to get in here and move it around a bit. I don't, the back guy is like peeking out a little bit over his shoulder. So there might need to be some overall, like, like a full body animation type thing going on, on our guy. But from a still it fits with this. I think we could maybe round this jaw right here. Since we have it linked, it fixes the shadow as well. This guy doesn't have an ear, which I hope is okay, if it is, then we can just make another shape that accomplishes that. Okay, I kinda like that, so. Let's get the shoulder halo thing fixed. So I just moved the interior sha- uh, like the full body part, and now I was moving the shadow. Okay, so you can also see this halo on this guy. And this is happening because well, it's really crappy how Illustrator does this stuff, but I'll try to fix it with the new thing I learned about. Uh, so our left man, you can see that there's, there's no seam here in Illustrator, like, no matter how far we zoom in, it stays vector, but once it's converted to pixels, it, if it's off a little bit, it's off a little bit. So there's a thing I learned about where if you click on it, get on your path, you can right-click, and there's a thing called pixel perfect, pixel perfect. Something called pixel, make pixel perfect. Okay, and I wanna just re-save. And it's gonna, should interpret footage. Did it? Nope, that's not fixing it. Well, that, that might be one that we with, uh, there's choker, simple choker, that you can put on our left man. Left man's on top. Okay, and what a choker does, it does kind of what it says, so imagine that you have your hands all around the edge. And if you're choking it in, you're like shrinking it in, so you're just squeezing it in, or you're pulling it out from like, its pixel value, so we wanna choke it in just a little bit, usually it's like one pixel to get rid of that aliasing edge, so there we go. Nope, it's gonna be more than that. Point five, you can see it made the edge softer a little bit, but I think that will be okay. And these are like, these are nitpicky gripes that most people won't actually see or care about, but I care. Oh, I care, sometimes just too much. Looking at this now, it's a weird sound, I don't like how the shadow of his head is not vertical, all the other ones, if I could pull that ruler, they're at least vertical, or they're slanting to the left, and this guy's slanting to the right. So I want to correct that. I think it will help. And so this, I don't see it as playing in a loop like this, where he's like looking up so much, so often. This just looks weird right here, but it's okay. I want him to be like he's like the undecided juror or something, where he's looking in one way, you think he's with everybody, but he's just not sure, so he's kinda like looking over. And maybe moving his shoulders is too, too much, I think this is definitely distracting for sure. Just like cut in. So let's look at it. One vert, two vert. Okay, cool, so we've got Alan E. Norris, the Mercyman. Let's try to work on his this background scribbling going on. So we're gonna I'm gonna make a new layer, a solid, I do this a lot. And I'm just gonna call this, uh, call BG. Come over here, la 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 la, HSB. Okay, that's good. And if you wanna see through it, lower the opacity like we were doing before, kind of. This is just like a organic background is what I call it. In here, I'm guessing there's a thing called scribble. Should be in every After Effects, if it's not, then you probably stole it from someone or something, but this is the effect that I was thinking would be able to create some of this, uh, etching. Original transparent. Reveal original image, there we go. Okay, so it's not gonna be solowed. Not gonna be solowed. Bring this down here. Above the book background, but behind our people. And I'm gonna do what it looks like to me, this background image, which is like a it looks kind of like marker, like a big fat marker that just drew in some chunks, that there's gaps once in a while, which is fine. But I'm gonna just make this fatter, and then I'm gonna make this just gonna play with these settings, a lot of them are I don't know, you learn it over time, I guess I'm gonna say. Or you just have to get in there and fiddle with it. And sometimes you have to like lower the thickness to actually see what it's doing elsewhere. Higher spacing so we can get a fatter line, and I want it to spill over the edge. I made a mask on a solid, so it would stay inside, but I think if I do I don't actually want it to clip. Which is what it's kind of doing. Okay, so I'll do on original image, get it to be the same color. If you pass these down, that's why it's not eyedropper-ing the exact color. Here we go, this is kind of what I want. Okay, and then this has built-in, uh, noise parameters. But I wanna be able to get this nice and fat like that marker. I want it to be curvaceous variation, sure, or something like that. Spacing lower. Okay, so this is unanimated. And where is Jumpy? Here we go. So you can imagine this is kinda like maybe his notebook, where he's always writing something down, crossing it off, cause he just doesn't agree with those people, who knows? Alright, looks okay. There's a bit more variation in this one. Let's try to get some of the cross things going on. No, we don't wanna break beyond our border. So what you can do is, I think you can just duplicate this and you can change the angle. And. Now they're like stacking on each other. Maybe you can give this one. A different seed values so it. Seems to move around a bit more. Sorry, talking and trying to, screen record is not good. Okay, so I'm liking that. And what else do we wanna try to do? I'm gonna try this etching. Oh, there's this old man that's in the background there. That's what he's looking at. He's not skeptical about these guys. He's like. This is the ghost, this is the evidence ghost, and he's telling us. Who, what, where, when, why, and I'm just not seeing it. Too stupid. I wonder if there is an effect that would work for this. Like leaving it as it is is not terrible, but. Okay, let's, let's go ahead and work on this little stranger guy. Elbow, armpit, waist. Okay, like, uh, I'm just saying where I'm putting these verts at. Heel. Toe. Ankle. Knee, crotch. Knee, heel, toe, ankle, knee. Waist in a bend. Armpit, elbow, hand. Hand, elbow, shoulder, neck. Left head, top head, right head. Neck. Okay, cool. So that's loose, but that should work. Let me copy this. I'm gonna try to. Paste this as a mask. I'm gonna see if I can get it to cut away. Alright, I'm gonna do one more scribble. Make it the color of this. Oh, that's kinda cool, where he's like a. A scribbled in ghost, almost. Eight. Make the spacing lower. Oh, where did that go? Stroke options. So it's closer. Ooh, having some weird deja vu right now. Like maybe he could be looking in the direction and then this like ghost appears. And right as he goes to look at it, the ghost disappears and it's just never there. They can never quite sync up. So this is like the, the idea that's scratching at the back of his brain, but he can't quite. Get there in time and it kind of, uh. We can do this thing where like draws on and erases off. And these are all just built-in things. And then from here. Start and then it would. Erase off. So let's, let's look at what we have. Something kinda like that. Okay, so I like this idea. It just needs more finessing and it doesn't quite have the. What do I wanna say? It really shouldn't be on this purple background. I should dupe this off onto its own layer. So we have more control. I think I'm gonna do that. So let's do. Let's just duplicate this purple background. Oh no, let's not do that. Let's do new, solid. This is the, whatever can be called medium orange. We're gonna paste, cause it still has our clipboard data saved. And then we're gonna come down to this purple. I'm gonna grab this scribble three, I'm gonna cut it off, uh, I'll copy it off and then turn it, disable it. Paste it onto this one. Okay, and that didn't work. I don't know why, I don't know why. Okay, so I'm using a different scribble technique, so I'm using that original one where it, it started clipping at the edge. Because now I want that. Because it helps fill in his full shape, his full like volume that was. Needed, wanted, desired. Let's open up these. Ah, here, this is what's happening. When I pasted it, it pasted the keyframes to. The time. Instead of to where. Uh, pasted them to where the header, the cursor timeline scrubber thing, current time indicator is. And then it puts them forward instead of defaulting paste into zero. So if you back up and then paste, your keyframes will be in the right place. Okay, so that's pretty good. Scribble. Ghost reveal. And also take away, but duplicate this. Angle two, and we're gonna change the angle. They don't stack like that, I see. That's what's going on. Okay, cool. We're getting this stroke, what is that, ten? I just wanna fill in this arm a little bit is what I'm trying to do and also. Just reveal enough of the figure that it's not stupid looking. So what you could do with this now even is like animate this figure, where he could be like reaching from the past. And that's when he starts to disappear, just as this guy's looking at it. And this is all whatever inferred exposition. Based on a cover of a book that I've never read. I haven't seen the movie that came out after this or whatever for an assignment. At a class that I'm gonna just talk at. I don't teach it even, it's doing a favor. Well, it's a good, it's a good experiment, good experience and a good challenge. Cool, okay, I kinda like that. Okay, so let's do that. Let's, uh, let's lean heavier into the. Ghost thing, a turbulent displace that lets you just. Whatever, put a noise on certain things, just like. Makes it look like you're looking through glass, I guess you could say. I'm gonna start doing some basic expressions. Time, times, one hundred. That just takes the time value, this little frame thing goes up. And it multiplies that times one hundred for every one of these. So for evolution on this. You get automated movement throughout. Your animation. Our guy is kind of disappearing, but. Fifty's fine, let's go down to twenty-five so it's smaller. Just like woo. Let's see what happens if we put scribble afterward. There we go, kinda like that. Okay. But it starts to look like the. Default added turbulent displaced to your fucking project and everything looks the same. And delay this animating away. I'm gonna make these ease frames, so it's like slowly draws on and slowly stops drawing on. And this ping pong frame animation thing is kind of confusing it, or what, what it represents actually. I'll just lower this a bit. And. Okay, I kinda like that. So that's just a figure. I'm gonna cut this off. It was on left man layer. Which you don't wanna start saving if you have your layers change. Uh, let me just show you what, what would happen. I'm gonna undo all the way until he was on the left man layer. I'm gonna save this document. The one that we're referencing in here, and you can see how everything moved. And now left man layer has this ghost guy in it now, which we don't want. We don't want that at all. So I'm gonna cut him off. Save. Saves, it updates, it puts it back where it was. Because the ghost is not on that layer anymore. If that makes sense. And it's still referencing the bigger shape of when it was down there, but I think if I close this. And double-click on it now, no. Oh, it's, it's referencing as big as the, uh, the shadow cutout shape is and that one spills over. Pretty big amount. Well, maybe it's doing both. Who cares? Who cares? That's just something to look for. Okay, so there's all of that. And now there's just like that little. Uh, I don't know how I'm gonna get the little, uh, scrity scratches on there. Let me pause and look. Okay, I'm not finding what I want, but I will. What I'm gonna do is take this layer, this layer, this layer, this layer, we'll see. I just wanna get our shapes. Yeah, we want to have this stipple effect on. Okay, this is where we want this stuff to go. Call that trio outline. It won't change anything. We just have to import it though. Cause it's only looking for the layers that were there when we first brought it in. We're gonna import as footage, trio outline. Went to do a layer size for footage dimension, hit okay. Alright, so I'm gonna drop this. And it will default to zero zero and you'll just have to line it up, but that's fine. I know that there's a thing. Called hair, which is kinda gross, but. We can try something like this. Put this on the very, very bottom. And this could be a dead end. It's just a way to quickly generate some ideas. I would call it. That are, you know, it's not like, what, what you should ideally do is probably go in and draw. Each of those, cause that's how, that's how they were created. They were drawn with a marker. Just some cross hatching, building up layers and stuff, and that's how. You would have to recreate the effect most likely, just like this was, it was like a big marker that was drawn on. And then used in the printing process, but it could be an etching also, who knows? But there's like no hard and fast, like copy this picture and turn it into an After Effects preset or anything like that. Uh, I wanna just look at this. So what we want is like, we want perpendicular hair, really. We don't want hair to come out of a source. We want hair to be. The opposite. Uh, so let's see if there's an option just to flip it around. Uh, I'm not seeing it, I'm not seeing it. Okay, so what you can also do is. Try using particles. But I have the feeling that's gonna. Throw things out. Yeah, this is, this is just a deep dive into a bunch of crap that might not work. This is gonna be our emitter. We're gonna go back to our solids and I'm just gonna do a new solid. A solid black solid. Put this under here. Put this under here. Put the particles onto this emitter type, layer, layer emitter. Trio outline, okay, so we got guys that are coming out of here. The, I'm doing this, you'll see why, because I know that there are options for quickly generating perpendicular lines sort of with this. Okay? This is the maximum that goes to, I guess, that's fine. Rotation aligned to motion. So you can see that these are launching like little rockets sort of, which this is already promising. Um, we want to ninety. There you go, so now they're emitting perpendicular instead of straight out like hair, which is good. Let's change the size. We might have to go and generate a couple strokes in Photoshop or something, but because the aspect ratio just won't go up any higher than this. Or let's do this. Okay, so that's like little, another little sprite that we're gonna make, or that we have made, I have made. And we're gonna tell this, instead of using square. Texture polygon and texture you're gonna use is this unnamed one, it's terrible, but okay. I'm gonna make this fatter just so we can see it. When you go down to contents, shape, stroke. Uh, round cap. You can start to see these things coming off. Disable that. Go back to our particles. Just make them bigger. Oh, what's going on? Oh, okay, that's what's going on, the aspect ratio is still off, that's what is happening. Oops, sorry. Okay? So uh, what's happening is it's kind of like emitting outwardly in all directions from our layers. If we got a camera, which I don't wanna do, you'll see that it'll, it's like coming forward and backward, that's why some are getting angled. So what I wanna do is do outward, I believe. Here we go, so this is looking a little bit like this, maybe, who knows, who knows? Um, outwards. Direction spread, no. Right, we just have to start killing some of these particles so they don't live so long. I mean, they mostly go off screen, but okay, so it's looking pretty good, I wanna pre-roll it so you don't end up with zero at the beginning. Pre-roll. There we go, pre-run. So start making them. Okay, and then we just need many, many more particles. Let's uh I don't know why this one looks like it's going down, honestly. Maybe if I move this emitter point. A desk, here we go. Going out of everything, there we go, okay, that's good. Let's get this to be random rotation, just like five. So it's not all perfectly perpendicular. And let's, let's do more and just see what happens. I feel like it, yeah, it starts to sort of rotate in three D space, which I don't really, I don't want. That's insane. Okay, it's pretty good. It's like a lot of bad blood between all these guys. Okay? But it's looking something, it's looking something, who knows? I'm just gonna try to get a color that's better for it. Nope. Technically, I think it's that color, is that right? No, it is not, that's a wrong technically. I wanna see if I can do this. Set matte from this. And use the alpha layer from purple V G. You know, with this much time invested, you probably could have done a simple duplication, footage, drawing layer. Might end up going back to that after all, but I think it's just moving too fast. It's so distracting. But again, now it looks like hair because it's uh the pieces are so big, they're sticking up through. I think point five. Okay? Just gonna select everything. This uber key and I'm gonna reverse these keyframes, so he's starting down here and then he looks up. I'm gonna make it five seconds and I want him, I want him to miss the ghost. I want to draw attention to the ghost. I want him to look at it and as soon as he looks, it's gone. That timing kinda just worked out. Well, uh, copies, oops. Hmm, okay. Can't copy and paste, keyframe animation. For shapes. Okay, cool, so it's kind of like the gist of what I wanted to do. Once you get to this point, you can uh, let's see. Since these are just stacked keyframes, like motion really doesn't work like that usually, so you can work on layering things. And by layering, it's kind of like setting the keyframes offset a little bit, so he's turns his body and his head at different times. And you could play with the influence of these keyframes more or less. I think when I, when he looks back, I want it to be much slower, like he's sad that he missed it. Sad that he missed it, and I'm just gonna Maybe it should look faster. And whenever you change this timing, you will have to probably clean up that animation that was going on in the very beginning. What we had set up and built before, just cause timings changed and that's okay, but it's better to rough it in and then clean it up later at the end, instead of like roughing or cleaning it up, cleaning it up and then you read your timing, you have to constantly be cleaning it up. I want him to take even longer. But there, you can see how like speeding up your keyframes. Like he's almost reacting more than he was before. Before he was just a little bit like robotic before, now he's even, he's possibly more robotic, but he's at least I don't know, there there's something else going on, it feels like. Okay, so this draws on from frame one. He wants to see it, but as soon as he sees it, it goes away. This background is just so distracting, these particles. Okay, that's pretty good, pretty good. Now there's some like finishing touches that I wanna get into and do. Make a new adjustment layer, which is same as they are in Photoshop, if you don't use them, I don't know. But uh, they're super, super valuable. Sometimes this is just a test, I wanna, I wanna see if this will work for this project. Just to kind of start to put it back onto the book, like a book cover. Project idea, concept. I want to go back to our turbulent displace. I don't know what the amount I want it to be, but it doesn't need to be big, it needs to be small. Okay, that's good, that's good. Wiggle on here. Now that just looks like things are moving up and down. Not very convincing, I would say. Okay, like that. Noise or is it grain? Let's just do some of this faster rendering grain. Okay, so uh, I'm gonna bring this in the class and I don't know if people are actually gonna have these plugins. This is just a, a grain, but. You can do it just as easily with any layer and doing something like. I think just this add green is fine. This is slow. Or slower. Much slower, but that's, that's fine, that's fine, everyone will be able to see it. Okay, so we're getting, getting there, getting there. Let's look at the original picture and see what we might be. Oh, you can see that I totally just used the wrong color blue, oh, whoops. Oh, that's really funny, but that's fine, I think it's. Let's do some spot color changes. Show you how to do that. To change to color. This and I'm gonna turn off this. From this. To, I mean, that's kind of cool in itself. Okay, and this is a transforming to color hue saturation. We're just gonna exclude things that we don't want. To change. This uh, edge is getting really, really gnarly. Ooh, that. Default noise is just so slow, it's very slow. Okay, and then I think. I gotta, I just have to mask out this. These particles are just don't look good. If you just duplicate this layer, put it on top and hit. I'll just keep that contained in there, that's better. Is that renders, let me look at this, I think we could maybe move this whole mat down a little bit further. We could give a new seed to these drops. We can also do a similar thing about I was doing up there, fast blur. Two. Um, sharp. Unsure. This one I'm going to. Change the random seed on both of these, which just changes the. The noise, so hopefully we can get some. More. Overlap between these little sprite thingies and. The other background, the purple. And now those are gonna be really slow because. It's rendering the particles multiple times and it's rendering the scribble animation multiple times. So it might not be kept and these particles, I don't think your computers will even support, but that's fine. There's, I mean, they're not default particles to After Effects. Very slow. And there's that, a streak that I don't like up there. Okay, so. The change to color thing works, it puts on a gross edge, which. I don't like, but uh, as like a project for kids, for students, sorry, or whoever, I don't think it's that bad. I think I'm gonna make the ghost draw on slower. And then I think I do wanna also. Animate it a little bit. So animating this is just like animating the shapes, but we're doing a path. And F nine has been taken over by the recording software again. And I don't like how his arm is. Not moving. Before it's drawn off, so something like that is good for now. I'm gonna rely on this turbulent displace to kind of. Move him. Just a little bit, otherwise, you can see how he's not lining up with his outline and that's good. Okay, so this I'm liking. This color change. I'm not liking, but it's, okay, is it closer to what we need? I'm gonna leave it more saturated, just cuz. Scribbles don't look really anything like this, but at least they're there. I'm gonna pull down the. Scribble mat a bit. If I can just keep it on its hand longer, that'd be cool. Okay, so I like, I'm liking this, I'm really liking this, Mercy Men book cover. Now what I wanna do is make an actual thing. So it doesn't look so crappy. By not so crappy, I don't know what I mean exactly, but no, y- you'll see, I want to hide. The edges, I wanna hide how it was constructed, I wanna make it look like it's magic-ish happening. On something, so we know that these solids are the right. Background, we're just gonna change the color, I'm gonna do an exposure. And I'm just gonna lighten it up a lot. I might reset that and I, I don't know if I want it to be pure white or what, I want it to be in between these two colors. Without going to hot pink, if that makes sense. Hue saturation, to lower the saturation only, here we go, something like this. Alright, now that we have this, you can do things like a drop shadow. And I want the light to come from the upper right hand corner. Want it to be off the page a little bit. I'm gonna duplicate it. Make it even softer. And I don't like these blacks. Okay, and I'm gonna do a uh, a bevel alpha. But what you wanna do, you wanna put it before your drop shadow. And I want to make it relatively thick, but I wanna lower the light intensity. I just wanna make it look like it's wrapping around in some way. I'm gonna put it kind of the same direction as where the shadows are coming from. I don't know about this pink. It's a little weak looking, a little too hot pink, so. Darken it and steal it. Darken it more. And steal it. Okay, that's pretty good, pretty good, pretty good, I'm gonna do a overall. Ramp also, I'm gonna put it before the. I'm gonna do a overall radiant ramp also. I'm gonna put it before the... Alpha. I'm going to move it so it's also kind of like the light position. Like just, just very, very light. It's hardly even there, but... It helps it not look so flat. I mean, to me it does. Cool, okay. So let's say you're gonna export it for Instagram or something. Let's just make this a square. And if you like wanted to, you could get a real book and you could map this onto its binding or something, or you could have someone like pull a book out of a bookshelf and you could... Superimpose it with some tracking stuff. But this is a good start to a little side project that I thought was fun. Maybe, I don't know. I'd say it's a really good starter project for people that are through basic After Effects classes. To have something that was made that you liked and that you wanted to try to tell a story with or just try to explore some technique. So in here, we were focusing on getting a two-dimensional face rotating in 3D, just showing what would happen there, and then we kind of like diverted very quickly, which happens all the time. No problem, no problem. Uh... Yeah, so I hope you learned something. Maybe you did, maybe you didn't. Either way, w-we did something instead of just sitting around playing video games. Hey us! Holy goodness, god dang it. So I did all of that work, made the video, started editing the tutorialized version or whatever you wanna call it, and I realized that I did not uh, make the mouth. So uh, let's just go back to our document and you can see, we have a mouth. This guy always had a mouth and we squelched him. We took his ability to speak away. So uh, I'm just gonna jump in and fix it. This makes a tutorial even longer, but it's even more of a life lesson, maybe. You never know. Okay, here's the MM mouth. Just gonna turn it on and we're gonna move it up above everything. And I'm, this part should be very, very fast. I would, I would think the only problem is getting it to fit with all the other stuff we've done. So what we're gonna do is focus on this range of time where his mouth hasn't been modified. Uh, I'm gonna turn off our color change. I'm gonna turn off our grain. And we're just gonna be working with our, our basic stuff again. Uh, we could motion track this and like move it across or whatever, but I'm just gonna do what we have been doing, create shapes from vector. This might give us another opportunity to uh, like add a little bit more acting with the, what he does with his mouth while he's looking at it or, or whatever. But I think, I think the aspect of putting the mouth in shadow will be kind of strong and it's worth going back and correcting this oversight. Uh, yeah, it's, getting eyes on your project, sometimes that's just important. I didn't have any eyes other than my own. And apparently I'm going blind because that's kind of a big thing, not huge. But maybe, maybe you're working on something and you wanted to add some little accoutrements or something like that. Is that the right word? I'm not sure. Alright, so we have a rough space of where it goes to. Oh, and we still have it linked, so you wanna break your linking. I don't know if I said that before, before the animation happens. Otherwise it's gonna be in the wrong spot the whole time. Okay, and we're just gonna match this up. I'm gonna use, I'm gonna copy these keyframes. And then I'm going to move them. And I don't want him to have this like frumpy, "Rrrr!" I don't, I don't know, look, whatever you wanna call it. So I'm gonna try to rotate his mouth to be perfectly flat and I'm gonna see what happens there. Gonna B and N. Okay, so we're gonna have to... Part of what's going on here is that... The keyframe velocity is just different. So once that is the same... It will match better. I mean, it'll fit better. It's gonna look better. Okay, so that's good, pretty much. This could just be a super, super easy fix. And like this, this is in shadow, but you never know what it could take away from the piece. I don't know. Just wanna be respectful of the original artwork and the original book cover. Like adding that this mouth has made this person more of a figure. More of a figure, more of an actor, more of a character almost. I think I wanna clean up what this looks like. Try to get it to fit this hard polygon style a little bit more. Okay. So you can see here, I, I'm trying to get him to look down a little bit, so his mouth should move quite a bit more. So when he's here, I'm just gonna move his mouth down. I'm gonna turn on the ping pong. Okay. And from here, we can copy these keyframes, paste them at this spot. And get them here. Okay, so in between here, we could potentially do some mouth animation, like uh, acting or something. We'll, we'll try just a couple simple keyframe things. And that's just to move them up and then to move them back down into the original resting position. That looks stupid. A lo- a lot of animations is just seeing what looks right. What if, instead of his mouth, we... Come on. Sometimes you just need to be on a keyframe, make a keyframe or have a keyframe. You could do the rock thing. Let's see how cheesy that is. Make it loop. Going back is the problem. It's a little, it's a little cheesy, but I kinda like it, kinda like it. And maybe, maybe it doesn't take much. What will really sell this though is to... To animate the shadow of it. And I, I think what's not working for it right now is that it is a... It's a soft shape. It's not hard edged like the rest of it is. Could just be too much. Maybe he's concerned. Breaking the rules of the art. Okay.